Hi.
That is the way that's supposed to work.
Oh, really? Oh, no, I didn't have to take it either.
Let me put this one, put me to code it as though. No, no, but even, not that before we were having a problem. I thought that was unusual.
Act by once.
Call a meeting's order at six P M.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Rose, such a pleasure to see you.
It's a pleasure to be seen. All right, pursuant to the Open Public Deeds Act notice that this meeting is given in the annual notice meeting, which was emailed to the Herald News, record officer of the county clerk, also P C C C website of Boulder Forest on December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. Royal Paul. Uh, I'm there, Red White.
Here.
Trustee Arthur. Trustee Drayford. Absent trustee Pia Denae. Trustee Moody.
Present.
Trustee Nutter. Absent. Trustee Ramirez, uh, trustee pub. Trustee Ramirez. Trustee Smith. High Chair Tannis.
Present.
Chairman Mark.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, first order of business is the consideration of the minutes of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three board of trustee meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, uh, of the motion on resolution number one, approval of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Move it.
So, second, second, okay, roll. Trustee Pia Denae.
Thank you.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Pub. Trustee Smith.
Yes.
High Chair Tannis.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think, uh, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say this is usually our favorite meeting of the year. Uh, when, when we have our Five Theta Kappa mob. Come, come to the meeting and tell us about all the incredible things that have happened. I'll, I'll just, just as a, a small introduction. Um, you know, a group of us were in Columbus, Ohio, a few people here a couple of weeks ago at the annual Five Theta Kappa National International Gathering. And, uh, you know, there were over at the twelve hundred chapters, something like that.
Almost thirteen.
Almost thirteen hundred chapters of, of Five Theta Kappa around the world. And what's, i- if you were there, um, it is so incredibly clear that, um, while there were thirteen hundred, everyone knows us. Everyone there knows who we are because we, we just shines. Um, absolutely amazing, you know, what, what, what this crew has accomplished. Um, you know, to, to be there, you're just so incredibly proud of them. You know, watching one of them get up before three thousand people and make a speech, watch, watching all, all kinds of stuff happen, getting to hear some of the incredible stories. And it's not just all the awards and stuff that they get, yeah, they get plenty of that, but it's just how, how they become leaders, you know, through, throughout everywhere and, and how everybody looks up to them and everybody's running up to them for advice and everybody's, you know, so it's, it's just, you know, you know, just by, by our very nature, community colleges, you know, we're, we're here to serve our local community where, you know, we want to be special here. It's rare that you're special around the world when you do something and, and with Five Theta Kappa, that's what we are. So, Dr. Gasparino, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Favorite days. I have many favorite days with you here. So. Karen Marco, Dr. Rose, Board of Administration. Thank you for having us. This is truly an honor every year to come here. Um, and last year was the first year we brought all of the bling with us. And so we decided that it needed to be a tradition. Um, this is just this year. So, we're gonna hear, we're gonna, you're gonna hear all about this. We're very, very excited. I'm super excited. Um, I want to introduce my co-advisor, Andy Prowl. So, while I can go on and on and on and on, this is not about me. This is the opportunity for our students to share with you all of the things that they do because of the opportunities that you all provide to us and so.
Yeah, and not everybody comes home from these conventions with metal.
We love to mingle.
You know, P P K's in the room.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dario Luenes, and I'm the chapter president.
I'm Jusian Nelson. I'm the VP of Scholarship.
I'm Stephanie, and I'm your coordinator.
I'm Carolyn McCarty, and I'm Chair of Service.
I'm Carolina Ramos, and I am the outgoing Middle States Regional President.
I'm Dr. Nara Garcia, who's the V P of Fash.
This is the table of content. This is everything that we'll be talking about throughout the year, all the projects that we have done, all the workshops, all the professional development. This is what you will see today. So, first off, we have summer planning. Uh, we went to the Five Star Academy, which was at Ryder's. And this is how we started our year as an E board. We got the chance to go and see Arlena and Nicolet have some amazing programming, leadership development, and workshops on understanding action, college project, and everything that we needed to start the year the right way.
Coming back from Five Star Academy, we formulated our chapter goals for the year. And this year, we wanted to prioritize campus awareness of what P T K is and also increase membership rates and, like, voting different ways to be involved in the chapter. And also, from our time at Five Star Academy, we realized the importance of engagement on a regional level. So therefore, we gave a final for us to promote membership gain.
Talking about goals, one of our goals every year is to become a five-star chapter. And for the end year, under the guidance of Dr. Gasparino, we are a five-star chapter, which means we know that we have completed the five-star chapter plan, which means that we completed different projects, we did engagement events, we went to regional programming, international programming, and we attended all the conferences. The benefits, we leverage our membership as P T K members.
In aligning with our goal to increase membership engagement on a regional level, we were able to bring a group of students to all leadership, um, and Salem Community College, where these students were able to both engage fellowships with other chapter in the region and also attend a moment to the workshop that covered hallmark writing, scholarship writing, and best leadership practices. And also, we had the privilege of seeing someone's famous blast blowing sessions, which also were able to connect with leadership practitioners.
And talking about engagement, one of our goals was to inform the students of how they can get engaged. So, this was one of our ways, which is the welcome packet. It's a packet where it just includes everything about P T K. So there we have our bios, our projects, how you can get involved once, thank you, come to your projects. We have all the programming that headquarters offer. And last but not least, how you can enter membership.
Now, we'll talk about membership. Since our chapter has been under the guidance and the leadership of Dr. Gasparino, we've had increased membership throughout the past years and even through declining enrollment and the pandemic, we were still able to keep us in number of membership acceptance. And since twenty twenty-one, the college has recognized the importance of membership as it shows many benefits and opportunities for students. And therefore, the barrier of financial, um, the, the financial burden has been lifted since then, and all eligible students are able to receive full membership. And we can see membership has grown since then.
And we just wanted to give you a thank you for college, for being, for all the members, and giving them the opportunity to be part of this amazing community. It's just, thank you, it's great.
And studies show that students get involved, do better. Therefore, we have formulated provisional membership for all students to be involved, regardless of T P A and credit card. And this year, we have welcomed thirty-five new provisional members.
So, chapter engagement is great, but leveraging your membership is even better. So, we host two monthly orientations. We both, we offer Zoom and in-person to be inclusive. So, to highlight the, to make the best of the membership, we highlight uh, different chapter updates and how they can engage with different college projects and honors and actions and his service opportunities and also scholarships. Next slide.
And you also have a hopefully a way to bring awareness of the chapter activity throughout the campus, which includes posting different flyers every week, sending emails, and as well as update, constantly updating our Instagram page to students. And this year, we've also started to post on the P T K portal page, which we're offering to see where chapter, to see their chapter offers.
But engagement is one of our main goals. And this year, we continue to reach that goal by having P T K Awareness Week, which is initiated by headquarters. And during this week, we talk about P T K, professional development, and we also have different fellowship activities, which members can get engaged in, and no more about P T K. And we also hosted engagement events. So, we went out on the Broadway lobby, and we had different fun engaging games to, you know, make people get engaged in our, in our society. And also, we let them know what we have to offer as a chapter. And we also wanted to be inclusive, so we tell them all the projects and different ways that they can get engaged, because there's so many ways to get engaged in our chapter. And this is another way that we, eh, provide engagement opportunities for all the members. So, it's the meetings. So, we have three different committees, which includes the college project, honoring action, and service delivery. And you will know more about how many students engage and how many hours this, they spend in this committee later on with service point system of the college. Other way that we plan on increasing engagement was through social media. So, we use social media as a, to promote engagement and let people know what we do as a chapter. And this year, we improved the way that we manage our social media and publish more pictures because we wanted to let everyone in our community know what we do. So, what a best way than some graphics. And throughout the year, we have Friday weekly workshops. This function has a way to let members get engaged also. Uh, every Friday, we have educational workshops and fellowship events. And they can get engaged in a variety of ways. There's like educational workshop where you can develop your professional skills, leadership, and also you can build relationship with your fellow peers and just have fun.
Service. Service is a great way for the students to, um, stay engaged with the events going on in school. Um, it's also gives them exposure and opens them up to more opportunities. I personally, I started getting active in service in October. Uh, by January, I was asked to be the Chair of Service. In March, I was invited to go to regional, um, I'm sorry, the Middle States region, decided on that. And then, um, now I'm presenting in front of you. So, also in October. So, um, so I'm, next slide please. Okay, the on-the-go vending machine food pantry is run solely on donations. So, in January, we started with, um, eight hundred third, uh, eight hundred items, eight hundred and two items. From February to now, over three thousand items have been donated to, um, support the vending machine program. Next slide please. Okay. Although we thank you very much for your support, uh, to the P T K. We do run fundraisers to help with our day-to-day operations and also it enables us to give scholarships to the students. So, we ran four bake sales this year, two in the fall, two in the spring. We like to do a theme for each one, just to make it more engaging for the students. Um, and with those bake sales, we raised over two thousand dollars. With the five K run for completion, we netted over eleven thousand, and that enabled us to give sixteen scholarships to students. Okay, I hope this is okay for you to see.
I don't know why it's yellow.
It wasn't like that.
It wasn't like that.
So.
Um, I know this slide, so I'll just tell you what it, what it's supposed to say. Okay, so the goal of this year was, um, engagement, staying engaged, and we definitely did meet that goal. A hundred and forty students have volunteered over two thousand hours of their time. And that has helped each of the programs that they have spoken about and that you'll hear more about run smoothly, um, such as the, the five K and the, um, the honors and actions, etc.
Next, we're going to talk about honors and action, which combines academic research and problem-solving skills to address real-world issues. And then we titled this project, Let's to Self-Express. So, headquarters updates and changes the honor study topic every two years. This year, they changed it to the Art and Science of Play, which looks at play at a scientific lens. And we chose a theme, Systems of Play, because it's, the question in the article was, how does identity, role, and access influence the experience of play? Next slide.
So, through analyzing and doing play through a psycho-social lens, we found that play is often used as a tool to enforce gender stereotypes and societal expectations upon gender and sexuality. And it's harmful as people feel limited in their self-expression in order to conform to different expectations and stereotypes about gender. So therefore, in order to be inspired toward an action, we, we found that studies emphasize the need to sort of, to break these expectations and stereotype and softer environment where individuals who want to feel that need to conform to their gender norms and talk about sexuality.
For our research, we landed on the question, how does sexuality, gender, and access to self-expression influence the experience of play? Excellent. And we collaborated with faculty psychologists here, Dr. Lana Murphy, to create a mixed method social observation and study. Dr. Murphy gave us the skills to create what we need for the, for, to create our plate fair. So, our plate fair, we had different toys targeted for, like video games, baby dolls. And we had our volunteers record the data, like, they wrote down what they observed about people going to toys and their targeting. Next slide please. And after this, we culminated all our research into a conversation because Sheri, she are a gender sex, gender expert, or an expert in gender studies. And we discussed our research question with them. And we highlighted the different, um, problems that societal and gender norms can create, like emotional labor and manual labor. And then after that, we created a public service announcement, and we highlighted the different benefits of gender fluid play. And we put that on social media, and it reached over five hundred people. Next slide please.
All right, now we have college project.
Next slide. So, the purpose of college project is to strengthen the relationships between faculty, staff, administration, and students. The purpose is also to directly align with the college's current values and mission. So, this year, the college came out with a new mission statement that wants to serve students through holistic support. And we were discussing the mission statement, and we realized that in order to provide students with holistic support, you have to understand who the student is, both inside the classroom and outside the classroom. So, in order to bridge that gap between faculty and students, we held a poetry event, kind of unveiling the student voice called Revealing the Unheard Truth, where student poets got up in theater and were able to discuss their life experiences and who they are outside of the classroom, trying to bridge that gap. And after this event, we definitely realized that while there is a lack of communication and understanding between faculty and students, there's also a lack of understanding between students and the resources that community powers has that would be able to help them through the life experiences that they're going. Next slide.
Well, during that time, the headquarters launched this initiative, which is called C C Smart, and the main goal is to increase retention and enrollment rate. And we looked at the fact that a lot of students, as we mentioned, don't know what we have here at P C C. There's so many resources that students don't even know about. I didn't even know about when I was doing this project. And we thought about what ways we can really, like, let students know about what we have to offer. And we came out, we collaborated with enrollment services and marketing to really just push the information out there, and that's good, it's not what we offer. And we created short videos, like one-minute video, about what P C C has to offer and what's the value of coming to community college. And it was a whole process. We had to, students were able to learn interview skills. So, we have, like, the whole student go to the department and ask questions about what resources they offered and how we can put this in the videos. And after that, we collect, what it says, some data on, of information they gave us, and we created a script. So, also students got some skills like script writing. And then last but not least, we went up there and we recorded with the departments, with the different directors, assistants, whoever is in the department that was willing to do a video, we recorded them. And last but not least, we had to edit the video, of course, and then we posted video. As you can see here, some pictures, we're recording, whatever you edit. And then we, we wanted to really make sure that this project had an impact. So, we wanted to promote it not only to the community, to the students here in the college. We wanted to make sure that the community sees the value coming to P C C because there's this sort of stigma that coming to community college is just not as smart shows, and it is. So, we created promotional material and make sure that we were inclusive and provided the videos in our platforms. So, we posted it on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, it was everywhere.
So, I'm gonna just take a step back for a minute. And C C Smart, the, the initiative that, um, headquarters has developed um, is to take the stigma out by taking the word stigma out and looking at community college as a smart choice. I have the, I have the privilege, since I, um, became Regent, Middle States Regional Coordinator, to take the regional officers to Jackson, Mississippi, where headquarters is located every year for what they call Regional Institute. And Regional Institute is, um, uh, we're all twenty-eight regions, regional officers come together, twenty-eight regions and their officers come together to, for professional development, leadership development, but also to help Five Theta Kappa collect data and work on their strategic initiatives. This year, the strategic initiatives are, is all about caring, caring for students, caring for student success, and caring for community colleges. The C C Smart initiative is about caring for community colleges and helping people to understand that it really is the smart choice. And so I had the privilege of being duped into and had no idea that this was happening and learned about it, um, at Catalyst. Um, but this is, this is, um, this was an opportunity, and, and I was fortunate enough to be able to share this, um, with you, um, this video, and I want to be on soon. So, do I stop sharing?
Yeah.
We have to stop sharing it because I'm not allowed to put it out on a platform yet. But I really wanted you all to see, um, well, what we did.
I was rather reluctant to attend a community college, although now I know it's probably the best choice that I've ever made. They're like hidden gems, to be honest.
I got, um, community is in the word community college. I met some of my greatest friends through community college, um, and I never thought that was going to happen.
Community college is really supportive and by, the faculty, all of my teachers, uh, different departments, even getting in contact with my college president is extremely accessible.
The faculty really cares about what you're doing, they want to see you grow.
Being able to create that relationship with my teacher allows me to do better in my classes. You will not be cared for anywhere else than you're cared for.
One of something that was a lot more affordable for being an enlisted guy in the Navy, but also had that flexibility of time in community college.
It's a smart move, and it allows you to find your identity, find who you are. And that's really what it's about when you're in college, learning who you are, learning your identity, and having a safe place to.
I was afraid that being a postgraduate student, being thirty-four, I was not getting to fit in. But clearly, I was lonely, um, because I had the most amazing time I ever had this last year in, at community college.
Community college has impacted my life by giving me a chance to actually seek out my degree that I never thought was due.
Seventy-six percent of students from community colleges who transfer to a public four-year university graduate.
I, I didn't know that.
Forty-nine percent of all bachelor's degrees come from community college transfers.
A lot of my students come from marginalized populations, live in poverty, or have immigrated here from another country. And community college has given them the opportunity to actualize their dreams.
So, um, when we get to the award section, Dariel's going to talk a little bit about the opportunity that we had when, oh, I gotta share again, sorry. This one? Okay. Um, Dariel's going to talk a little bit about, um, the, the award, the C C Smart Champion Award that we received. Um, I received a phone call from Dr. Lynn Tinger Ladner, who is the CEO and President of Five Theta Kappa a few weeks before the, um, international convention. And she said, many chapters did their college project on C C Smart. Five of them were good, yours was the best. And she invited Dariel and another student, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, to sit on a panel with the President of the Community College Association from Missouri and headquarters marketing staff, um, as the only two students to deliver information about C C Smart and the project that they did to the President's and Chancellor's luncheon at the convention. So, they talked about, they had the opportunity to talk about our project to over sixty college presidents, campus CEOs, the Board of Directors and Board of Trustees, um, at Five Theta Kappa Regional Leadership. Um, it was a very daunting and intimidating audience. And they got up there, and Dariel has a picture, we'll talk about it later. But, um, these are the kind of opportunities when we work with the college that the students then get to do and sit on international sleep. So, we're really. Okay, back to the show.
So, Five Theta Kappa offers ninety minutes and scholarships. And we have some scholarship recipients here. Carolina Ramos and Nicolet. They, they, they are again. So, they also got named as a New Jersey All-State Academic Team. As you can see there, they have, we went to a dinner with, eh, Dr. Rose, he's there too. And they got acknowledged for their amazing work. So, you see all these awards here? So, that's what we're going to talk about. Five Theta Kappa is all about recognition, and we just want to let you know what we, what awards we got as we went to this conventions. So, first off, we're going to start with the Middle States region and.
All right. Um, little introduction. This year, I was the Middle States Regional President, and it was the greatest experience ever. I am going to miss this so much. I have so many leadership skills, public speaking skills. I met so many people across the region. I made my great friend here, Nicolet, who's going to be my friend for life now. But it was a great experience that I will for sure take all the things I learned to my. that I will for sure take all the things I've learned to my next class.
But I'm now going to just introduce it to the year. Being a Middle States Regional Officer, it's a tremendous experience. Both the leadership development that you receive from the regional leadership team is tremendous, but also the connections and networking that you're able to make. Traveling across the Middle States region was really awesome. So it was definitely like a life-changing experience and I'm definitely going to miss it. So Phi Theta Kappa's all about recognition. And the Middle States region definitely brought home some recognition this year. So both Carolina and I were fortunate enough to be named distinguished regional officers. Only the top ten percent of entries were named distinguished regional officers. So it's a real honor and that was just great.
Thank you. Also, as regional officers, we also need to implement regional programs to across eighty-two chapters in the region. And we wrote for three homers. We decided to concentrate on leadership, fellowship, and chapter engagement. And we are happy to announce that we got all three of them, which is very rare.
This event is, I just wanted to say thank you so much. This year, I had the opportunity to run for Phi Theta Kappa International. So it was a really awesome experience, both professional development, being able to, I had to give a speech in front of about three thousand people. So it was a little daunting, but it was a really great experience to be able to do so. And being able to connect with other people and meet a bunch of new people was a really awesome experience. So I just wanted to take this, take the time to say thank you so much for all of your support all of the time.
Oh, and we have a tradition now and we have it going. So I present to you now the Middle States Regional President, which is Darian Nunez.
Dariel will make the seventh Regional Officer for St. County Community College.
All right, and now we're gonna talk about the awards. Okay, so like I was mentioning earlier, Phi Theta Kappa is all about recognition. And we brought home some awards. So first off, we're gonna start with the Middle States region. So these are the awards that we got only at the regional level. So to start off, we engaged in the program that Carolina and Nicolette developed throughout their term. And we got engaged and so we got the number one MSR, MSR Legal Honor Chapter. So we're the first one, we got engaged in all the programming that they developed. And we are very happy, which is an award. And we also have Amy, who, Amy Paralis, he got the Person Award. This one's special for me because we got the most distinguished chapter in the region for the first time in the history of our chapter. And I cry afterwards. It was very fun and under the guise of he was, you know, it was, it was really great. We, we'd never reached, last year, we got number five. We never did the highlight before. And this year, she said, I wanna be number one in the region if we got it. So hopefully next year, we get better awards and we keep it going. It's just, it's amazing.
Not competitive at all?
No. So now, we're gonna talk about the awards that we got only at the PTK Harvest Convention.
Top a hundred chapters throughout internationally. And you got the Beta Alpha Continued Excellence Award.
So we have that, which means only nine teams. Nine?
Nine.
Nine teams, yeah. So only nine teams got this award and we were one. So this means that we have been distinguished chapter for more than three years. So we just, just keep it going.
And we've been a distinguished chapter for.
For five years in a row. So next year is gonna be the sixth. This is a picture that we used to talk about. We, so CC Smart, they launched this award. This award was never, this is the first time that they ever announced this award. And we were fortunate enough to be the number one CC Smart Champion Award. We were awarded this award because Carlos Broya's work was the best. And as you can see, that's awesome stuff there, it's there too. And that's the picture when we were on stage in the final, in front of President and a lot of important people that I was never talking to. But it was fun and President came up to me, oh, they could, oh, how did that? It was so great. It was, it was the best experience. I never got the chance to speak in front of important people, important people on stage. It was like, I felt it was, but it was a great experience. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to do this.
Our alumni association was the second most distinguished alumni association internationally.
Now, we're gonna talk about the awards that we got for both the Middle States Regional Convention and PTK Harvest Convention. So the first award that we got is Tom Moore, who was named the Distinguished Advisor, the Distinguished Officer Award, both Administrator Award, both internationally and region. So he got, he got the award, you can see here in the bottom. Then that's the MSR and that's the Harvest.
For, we also ranked the distinguished officer team on the MSR internationally.
But we got, we got to be one of the distinguished officer team.
And we have our number one MSR international, we'll just do a chat drop through here, Stephanie Pocksky.
So if you don't know, Carolina was named number one in the region, the most distinguished chapter officer. And Stephanie is the most distinguished chapter officer.
And for distinguished chapter member, was given to Jared. Ranked within the region and internationally.
Jared is also the only the second distinguished member award that our chapter members.
He was the number one, the first, the most distinguished member in the region. And we got our missing advisor, who received the Continued Excellent Advisor Award for both the Middle States region and Congress. As you can see, she's got her award, it's there too. Very good.
And also, our honors national project was both distinguished in MSR and international.
And our challenge project was also named distinguished project, both in the regional level and internationally. You can see there's some pictures. And last but not least, these are the driving profiles. So we have Anar Garcia, who's not here to ask what he's going to read in private.
Stephanie, a major education mentor for William Patterson, so major in secondary education in English.
I'm Gio, I'm transferring to Montclair. Currently, I'm studying local arts illustration and I will be continuing my education at Montclair.
I'm Carolyn and I am in social work and I'm here doing the two-plus-two program for that.
Hi, I'm Carolina, hi again. My major is biology and I will be transferred to Rutgers University as a biology major, track pre-med. I want to be a pediatrician.
Hi, my name is Nicolette. I'm going to Harvard in Boston, in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm super excited. I'm gonna transfer as a political science major. Eventually, I wanna be a human rights lawyer.
And my name is Gabriel Nunez and I'm gonna be here at CC. I'm gonna get a certificate, I major is work development. So I just wanna have more experience with designing. My student will be a graphic designer. So it's just like a little bit of more knowledge to my resume and just my skills again.
These students all have been accepted to exceptional schools and these are the schools that they landed on. So we're super proud of all of them and really excited to see where they go from here. We would like to take this opportunity to invite all of you to our annual induction ceremony on May twenty-third at three PM. We hope that we have a little bit of time and you can join us. You'll hear a lot more about what we've done throughout the year and we celebrate all of our graduates. We have over four hundred students that will be inducted. I hope they don't show up. Sorry. Thank you so much for your time and all of your support always.
Were you impressed? It's pretty amazing, isn't it? You know, I, I said this a couple of weeks ago and I got to introduce some of them somewhere. And I've known some of them for, for a little while now since they finished a college. And when they came here, you know, I met them the first time, they would never have gotten off like they did tonight and, and do what they just did. Some of them were quite shy. Probably had never spoken before, approved before. And, you know, just what they did tonight is a big deal. And I would tell you, this doesn't go on at every college that the Board of Trustees meets with their Phi Theta Kappa students. No, and it doesn't even go to college that, you know, that they support them going to conferences or support them, you know, doing some of the things that, that they do. So, you know, the, the culture that you all created here is, is a big part of this. And, you know, so you're, you're, you're a part of all this that has happened with them. And, you know, a couple of years ago, this award was cited by those of you who were here, got medals at, at that time for, for your contribution and the support that you've shown. Yes, of course. Yeah. So, you know, it's, this, this is a big deal. It's, 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 and then you're a part of it, so. So they're, they're here to say thank you. All right. I, I, I do wanna introduce, we, we do have, you heard about her when you appointed her, Susan Holden, who was our new vice president. So you wanted to introduce yourself for a minute?
Please, I wanted to say thank you for appointing me here. I haven't stopped smiling since I joined the CC family on May first and I really look forward to working with everyone. So far, it's been a dream. I love returning to the county college space. I was at Essex County College for twenty-three years and then took a detour to Ramapo and now I'm back where I'm supposed to be. So thank you very much.
Yeah, just probably, this is probably as good a time as any to talk about just the stuff that's, that's in your packet. So as you, as you've heard, next week is, is the big week around here. So Monday evening at six o'clock, we have our nursing penny in the theater, if any of you were available for that, that's, if you've never seen one. I've come in contact with a lot of nurses over the past couple of weeks. I appreciate them more than ever. They, they, what a difference they made. Tuesday is Phi Theta Kappa at three o'clock, as you heard, and our graduate award ceremony at six PM that evening. And the biggie is on Thursday evening at six o'clock is commencement. You should have a parking tag in here that'll get you into your normal Ellis Street lot. So, you know, hold that. If you can, we have a reception here down in the cafeteria in this area, starting at four-thirty that day. So you come down here and we'll get you dressed in your regalia and have you all ready to go. All right, going on to, I'm gonna turn it over to Jackie for a few minutes to talk about some new degree programs we have.
So I'm here tonight to present four academic items to you. Two of them are related to our relationship with the Tech School and the Biotech Innovatives. One is a degree Associate in Science in Biotechnology, which is in your packet. It's a thirty-one-page proposal to the state of New Jersey for a funeral. But I'll just go over the highlights. As you know, we are involved with the Tech School in the Innovative Center for Biotech. And our responsibility there is to provide the students, the high school students, with a two-year Associate in Science in Biotech. So they will be receiving their high school diploma and a two-year associate degree in biotech at the same time. So in September, it's my understanding that they are taking two hundred students into the Tech Innovative Center with a total ultimately of eight hundred students at that center. The Associate in Science in Biotech is a transfer program. We have already met with William Patterson and have a preliminary draft of an articulation agreement. So a student who goes to Tech, spends two years or four years in the high school, receives an associate degree in biotech, can stay in Passaic County and get a bachelor's degree in biotech and be able to work in local laboratories and, and get a fairly decent paying job. I think it was in the fifties or sixties as we, as the last IR, Doctor Home reported. So what does the program entail? Again, the curriculum is in your, in your packet. Thirty credits of general ed, a very difficult thirty-credit major. Biology, microbiology, chemistry, molecular genetics. It's gonna be a very tough program for students. But I think, I do believe that these students are selected from around the county and we're certainly optimistic that these students will be able to get the diploma plus the associate degree at the end of four years. So, so that's one program. The second program that's also in your packet is a Certificate of Achievement. And that is what we call a small certificate around here in, say, sixteen credits, biology and three four-credit biotech courses, which will put the students in a position where if they wanted to work in a lab when they got out of high school, before they went on to William Patterson, they could do that, or maybe even work part-time in a lab while they were going to high school. And that was put on at the request of the tech. They wanted some CTE courses out there that the students could take. Maybe some students will decide that they don't wanna go on. They'll at least have the benefit of these tech courses. So those are the two programs that I need your approval. The third is not a program connected to the tech, but it's an articulation agreement between Passaic County Community College and William Patterson University. And this is, our, our degree is the Applied Science in Digital Media and Distribution to transfer into William Patterson's Bachelor's of Art in Communication and Media Production. And so they will accept sixty credits, our total credit in this degree, applied science degree is sixty credits. They will accept all of our credits into this faculty program. I just wanted to remind you that an applied science program is not a traditionally transfer program. And that's why we need this, this articulation. Because if it was, the AS in, in biotech to a BS in biotech is also covered under what we call the Lampit Field, right? So that would be automatic transfer. But this is not an automatic transfer, so we're happy to have that. And last but not least, to modernize ourselves a little bit, we wanna change the name of the AA in English Journalism option to the AA in English in Digital Media. And we feel that, you know, journalism reflects back on a time when print publications were the major focus. Since print media has evolved to include digital content as well, this title is more in keeping with programs within the field. So I need your approval for that, Will.
All right, and under business items, this is probably the longest-standing item we've been talking to about. Is it's probably started four, five years ago. We last bought our computer system here in nineteen eighty-six. This is when we installed it, probably bought it in eighty-five or eighty-four. Um, but in nineteen eighty-six, we, we brought it up and, and installed it. Um, we've been evaluating for, probably almost before Brad even came to college, we started evaluating the other systems that are out there, comparing it to what we have and have, you know, taken a long, 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 long time to try and figure out, you know, what, what our next move is. Obviously, this is not something you, you go into, it's, it's going to be a several-year project that it will take us to implement a new system. Um, and, uh, we are ready to make a recommendation to you tonight and I'm gonna ask Brad to introduce it.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Rose. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we went through a long and exhaustive process to select a new system for the college. Uh, we ended up selecting anthropology platform. Uh, and as Dr. Rose mentioned, this is gonna replace the computer system we bought in the eighties. And that changed significantly since then. Um, so this purchase that we're putting forward, uh, forward to tonight, uh, it's really gonna enable us to move forward our strategic initiatives at the college. It ties into the current strategic plan in many different ways. And it's gonna give our faculty and staff the tools and the information that they need to help our students succeed, to engage with them, uh, to operate as an institution more efficiently. Uh, so there are, there are many benefits that come along. Uh, so the purchase is for, uh, I guess in aggregate about three point five million. Um, most of that is gonna be in the first year with the implementation. Um, and also it carries on into the second year as well.
And it funds, this is money that we requested from the county last year, which they gave us a special appropriation for.
So, so it's fully funded, so this is just the approval of this election event.
Unless you want me to talk about the turnout here that we're also buying for our firemen. Uh, I think, I think everything else here is pretty self-spotted, sorry.
Right. So, um, and right now, uh, we may have a motion to adopt resolution number three. Consider resolution items as set forth in the amendment that dated, they steam twenty-twenty-three. Construction alliance and, uh, he has mentioned, uh, business items that we just started about and personnel. Move it, second?
Second.
Rusty Acker?
Yes.
Eric? Rusty Draper?
Yes.
Ma'am? Rusty Dean-Deney?
Yes.
Rusty Moody?
Yes.
Rusty Powell? Rusty Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tennis?
Yes.
Chairman Markham?
Yes.
Are there any remarks from the public? We don't have anyone from the public here, but not online. There are none? Okay. Are there any remarks from the trustee?
I, I just wanna say that the presentation was awesome, but I think that the honor's in action, having that experience at a county college. Like y'all are ready for it, about twelve degrees. Seriously, because you don't really learn a lot of it. Like, I know that I didn't, like, to master programs, like, some of that work is just amazing. So kudos, Mr. President and your team. It's just awesome to see, like, my heart's just smiling because you guys are the future of state county, right? And just to be the series that you get here, talking about eboards and my team and Mr. President. And it's just amazing to see that kinda work. Um, as a girl, I was fourteen when the computer system was here. Uh, purchased here and just to see how the state county has grown. And you all talk about stigma, uh, of a state county college. Uh, part of me is sort of jealous because I still have a hundred thousand dollars in student loan. So, uh, you know, you guys have a world of good happening here, so, and I'm glad that you know it. So I'm gonna stop to thank you.
Hey, you have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Second? Rusty Acker?
Yep.
Rayford?
Yes.
Rusty Moody?
Yes.
Rusty Poe? Rusty Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tennis?
Yes.
Chairman Markham?
Yes.
We're already good, everyone.